Hi, everybody. This is Jack and Letty and Seonee. And we are here to do our second meeting. Happy Juneteenth. It is June 19th, 2020. And I am going to hand the floor over to Letty. And she's going to start talking about EKGs and everything she knows about that good stuff. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Okay, so I have this book that I got from my EKG class that I did like back in 2018. I still really liked the book. I downloaded a PDF. So if you guys want the PDF for that book, I can send it to you. And in here, so at the end of every chapter, there's like different EKG rhythms. And then it'll ask you, let me see if I can find an example real quick. Sorry, my feathers are kind of bumpy. But it'll look like this. It'll give you a rhythm. And then it'll ask you, what's the rhythm? What's the rate? What's the PR interval? What's the QRS duration? And you know, that's like stuff you can measure. And then
That's really helpful.
Here, what I would focus on if you get this book is these right here. It tells you the characteristics of each of the rhythms. And like, I wouldn't really too much about worrying too much about the other stuff that's in there, about the rhythms, because it goes into more detail than the Hoffman book. And I'm not sure that we do need to know all those extra details. Because it is like a lot. It'll be like the rhythm and then subrhythms under that or something like that. So I would just kind of look at the characteristics for each of the rhythms. So like, what's the rhythm? What's the rate? What are the P waves? What's the PR interval? And what's the QRS duration? So if you guys want this one.
ECGs, excuse me. Oh, I'm so old school.
Well, EKGs and ECGs is basically the same thing.
I know. I gotta get used to the, get with the times. It's terrible. ECG is made easy. Thank you. That's actually really helpful to have broken down like that. And by the way, like, Letty is the go-to person for like, if you, I'm not joking. She saved my butt last semester with that book that you mentioned that
The study guide?
The study guide book, yes. She had the study guide book for Taylor that she found that nobody recommended. And I'm like, this thing is literally made for Taylor. And it was beautiful because it helped you understand exactly how to start grouping things. And yes, it does require more. So you don't have to do all that extra stuff. Like you don't have to write all that out, but it helps you kind of get an idea of what to look for. And that was so helpful. So yeah, she's good at finding that stuff, which thank you so much.
No problem. Then I also have my notes typed out that I did for that class. So if you guys want those too, let me know. Like, I asked if you guys want them because I don't know if people want to be spammed with my emails like a million times a day. Because I do send out a lot of stuff. Like, I'll be looking up EKG videos and I'll send them to my friends. And then, you know, like, stuff like that. So, or whatever PDFs that I find online somewhere. I'm like, oh, this looks important. I'm gonna send it to you.
Absolutely. You can absolutely include me in that list.
Okay. I took it at Glendale Community College.
Oh, awesome.
It's online?
No, it wasn't online. It was in-person class. And we really went like, like pretty intensive to that class with like the material, the rhythms and everything. So what we are doing, the rhythms that Ms. Minor said that we have to know for met search is easy compared to what I had to know. So learning it another time, you know, it's really kind of solidifying some of that information and kind of breaking it down. I'm not going to explain this next part, but you should know, like, like, so you have the rhythm of the EKG, right? And then know when atrial depolarization, repolarization, and ventricular depolarization and repolarization occur during that time. So like, when do the atria contract? When do the ventricles contract and stuff like that? And then I forget what else. But yeah, so like know when each of those things, like how they coincide with each other, basically. It's explained in the book in Chapter 29. And it'll tell you like the P wave is atrial depolarization. And then you have your QRS complex, which is ventricular depolarization.
Yes.
And then the T wave is ventricular repolarization.
There's one thing I wanted to add to that, too. There's in Chapter 28, and I can't remember everything about it. If you want more details on that, Chapter 28 has the phases. It's like Phase 0 through Phase 4. Am I right, Letty?
Yeah.
You probably remember that much better than I do. And so it's in Chapter 28 if you're looking for it, and it'll go through that. And there's something, I forget, there's another thing that comes right before that in the book that's important. So yeah, and it talks about all that depolarization and repolarization that Letty's talking about in like super detail. So that helps sort of supplement that as well. But yeah, 110%. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and then, oh, sorry, what?
You said that we have to know rate and rhythm of the ECG?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then know the action potential of like how everything happens. So I think in the EKG book, it might actually go into more detail than the Hoffman book. I don't remember, but I don't want to waste too much time trying to look for it right now.
That's okay. So you're saying action potential is important to know as well?
Action potential, the electrical pathway, the like what happens during the P wave, the QRS, the T wave and stuff like that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so then we have our EKG paper. Okay, so a lot of people kind of get a little bit mixed up on this. So you're gonna have, let me see if I can find a picture for reference.
Letty knows. I'm sitting here and I told her, Seonee, I feel bad. I'm like, I understand what I'm reading, but you give me this thing. And I look at it and I'm like, graph paper and my eyeballs are swimming. So it's not going.
I know. All right. Okay, I found a good reference.
Awesome.
It's a lot of chocolate, bro. My brother's making a smoothie right now. And he's just taking the chocolate syrup and it's just going forever.
He's like antioxidants, antioxidants. That's what I'm shooting for now. Chocolate antioxidants.
All right. I'm trying to get a bigger picture of what I found. Okay, this will have to do. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen right now. Okay, so right here, we have large squares, right? And then we have our small squares. So the large squares you're going to see on the EKG paper are like basically bolder pink lines, okay? Those are going to outline the large squares. And every large square is 0.20 seconds. The small squares are 0.04 seconds, okay? And then, so left to right is going to be time in seconds. Up and down on the graph is going to be amplitude. And that's going to be measured in millivolts or whatever this is.
Millimeters. Yeah, according to Hoffman, it's millimeters, but whatever.
I like millivolts better.
Millivolt sounds cool. I like measuring things in volts. Somewhere along the line, we had joules. And I was like, oh, fun. We're getting English now.
So the reason that we have to know what each is measured in on the graph is like when we measure the P to the P, when we measure R to R, when we measure the PR interval, when we measure the QRS, like, is it wide? Is it narrow? Is the PR prolonged? Is it within the normal limits and stuff like that? So that's why, like, we need to know, like, the seconds and everything for this. So like PR interval and normal is going to be 0.12 seconds to 0.20 seconds. Our QRS normal is going to be less than or equal to 0.11 seconds. And then, if you guys remember, for our class, they said that EKG calipers are optional. So the way that we would use the EKG calipers for this is we would like kind of take where two, like, let's say there's an R here and an R here, right, from the QRS. And then we go and measure it to the next two and the next two. So if they're all within the same distance, that's going to be a regular rhythm. If they're not all within the same distance, that's irregular. So that's how, or that would come in handy, the EKG calipers, basically.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Let's see. And then, so the book has a little section on how to do EKG interpretation. So first, we're going to find out the rate. And then the way that we find out the rate, like, you know, just by looking at it. And this is going to be, it only works with regular rhythms. So you're going to give you a strip, right? Every strip is going to be six seconds long. And then in that strip, you're going to count how many Rs there are in there. So if there were, for example, six Rs, right? So that means six QRSs. You're going to multiply six times 10, and that's going to give you your beats per minute. So if there's six, that's going to be 60 beats per minute in a six-second strip. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yes, makes sense. Thank you.
So, yeah, let me see if I can find an example.
Chasers are great.
So in this one.
Oh, Lord, here we go. Sorry. Let me get my glasses. Here we go. I look at it and then my eyeballs scramble. Somebody save me.
So let's say in this strip right here, let's say this was six seconds, right? So I'm going to count one R, two R, three R, four R, five, six. There are seven Rs in this strip. Therefore, this is going to be 70 beats per minute.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that's what I mean by counting the Rs. And then they have different ways of figuring out the heart rate. And the other two are either counting small squares or counting large squares.
Yes.
And here, if we're counting large squares, let's see, there's one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four. So there's four squares between the Rs, right? So if it's four large squares, you're going to divide the number by 300. So you're going to have 300 divided by four, which is a number. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Don't make me do math on the fly. We got you. We got you.
Okay, so then that's going to be your beats per minute if you did it counting the large squares. See, that's a little bit more accurate than just 70 beats per minute. But now let's say we are counting small squares. Counting small squares is actually going to give you the most accurate beats per minute.
Okay.
So let's see.
And that would be like every single line, like vertical line of small squares, right? Just so I make sure I understand.
Yeah, so like if this is four boxes and then every single box has five small squares in a row, that's going to be 20 small squares.
Got it. And okay.
Yeah, so some of these have a little bit more or less than 20 squares in between. Like, this one has exactly 20 small squares in between, but this one doesn't. So you would just count the number of small squares. Hypothetically, I'm going to say that there's 19 small squares. And then that's the example in the book. So you're going to do 1500 divided by 19, and that's going to give you your beats per minute, which would be 79.
That's the most accurate methodology. That's the most accurate one? Okay.
Yeah.
Is that the one that they're probably going to have us use most?
Yeah.
Estimate. Okay, because like, I was wondering about that. You know, like, what are they going to want us to do? Count the QRSs or count the squares? Where do you think we're headed based off your experience?
Based off my experience, how we calculated the rate in my class, we just counted like how many Rs there were on each EKG strip. If it became a regular, then that would be like a little bit tricky because the Rs are not going to be like directly, like even from each other. So that's where it gets a little bit tricky. So it becomes less accurate the less regular the rhythm is, basically.
Okay. And when you're counting the squares, you might have already answered this. And I'm really sorry to have to be a pain in the butt and ask. But where do we start counting from to make sure, like, it's not, because obviously, I realize I was misreading that even in my own understanding. I was like, oh, I count all the squares within this six, the six-second run. I'm like, no, that doesn't make any sense. Where do, yeah, thank you. Where do I start counting from? From the first QRS, is that where?
Yeah, so like, let's say your R right here is in a square. You're going to count the square after it because you want to do in-between, not like including. So like
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Sorry. Words for me. I told you, I was like, watch me have to sit there with the teacher for like 10 hours and ask a million questions about this.
Here we go. I can make this bigger. Okay, so I'm going to like move this on the side. So see how this R right here is in this square? We're going to count this one right here. So one, two, three, four, right? And then this one is kind of like in here. So I'm just going to count this one
Okay.
Right on the line. So I'm just going to Yeah.
Oh, you're counting in-between them?
Yes.
Oh, and then are you only doing that for that one? Oh, I see what you're saying now. Now it makes like a whole bunch more sense.
I mean, I wouldn't, like, if you want to count all the small squares in between every R, go ahead. But I would just pick, I would just pick two Rs.
Okay, so just count between, oh, I get it now. Thank you so much for blowing that up and showing that because now I understand what it's talking about. That makes sense. You just count between one R to R interval and then divide that into 1500, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh, that was so helpful.
Okay, so you know, with the rate, we want to find out, is it a regular rate? So 60 to 100 beats per minute, is it slow, less than 60 beats per minute? Or is it fast, more than 100 beats per minute? So you know, just looking at the rhythm, sometimes you'll be able to tell if it's slow or if it's fast because of how many Rs there are going to be in there. And then you're going to find out if the rhythm is regular. So this is where you can take your EKG caliper. So you're going to be like, okay, you know, I'm going to put my calipers here. And then I'm going to take this distance and I'm going to measure it against every other Rs. So then I'm going to take them over here and measure it against this one. Is it the same? Is it shorter? Is it longer? So that's how you're going to find out if it's regular or not. And then you're going to count, you're going to measure the P to P intervals. So I don't, don't take my word for this. But I don't remember if we count from the top of the P or before, then measure it to like the other P here.
In the book and see if I can find it while you're talking because I'm not sure. It might have been, but I don't remember.
You're going to see if the P to the P are equal. So like, let's say, like, this is going to be normal sinus, right? So this P to this P is, let's see, one, two, three, four, 0.80 seconds, right? And then this one, it's another 0.80 seconds. So that means that our P to Ps are equal.
Oh, okay.
Now, let's say my next P was right here. So that one happened a little bit earlier, which I will talk about later with the premature atrial complexes. And then we're going to look at our Rs. So it's going to be this right here, from here to here. So is that equal along the EKG strip? And then you're going to look at the P waves. Are they there? So is there a P wave for every QRS? Or is the P wave inverted? Is it like flat, not like nonexistent? Is it after the QRS? Like, what's going on with the P wave? And then we're going to check to see if we have a QRS. So we have a QRS here, here, here. We're also going to be looking at a T wave. So we want to make sure that all of our waves are basically there. And then we're going to look at our intervals. So the one we usually look at is going to be the PR interval. So even though it says PR interval, it actually goes up to the Q.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's going to measure from the beginning of the P to the beginning of the QRS. And that's going to be your PR interval. And that's going to measure 0.12 to 0.20 seconds.
Okay, that's the normal.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And you can find that on, if you're curious as far as where to find that, page 564, goes over intervals. Am I right on that, Letty? I think I am. Yeah, that's where I kind of wrote it down. It starts to go over them and then I summarized it and it's in there. So I just wrote PR interval equals, QRS interval equals, and QT interval equals. It's there on that page. I can't find the other thing. I don't see it in the book. It could be there, but I can't find it. So that'll have to be a question we ask.
Well, if we don't have to measure like how many, like where it starts to where it ends, I would just, you know, take it from the top of that P to the top of that P, like that.
Okay.
Then measure that along the strip to see if they're going to be all equal.
For sure.
And then the last two steps, I mean, they're pretty self-explanatory from like the stuff that I mentioned earlier. So basically, is there a P wave before every QRS? And is there a QRS after every P wave? I don't know why they say that. I feel like that's the same thing. Um, but yeah. And then it goes into calculating heart rate, which we just explained. So the first method was counting how many QRSs there are and multiplying that by 10. And then counting the large squares. And then we divide by 300, so 300 divided by the number of large squares. And then 1500 divided by the number of small squares.
That is so helpful. Thank you for the visual and the explanation. That really made it. It drove it home for me just on that, just practical. Letty, future nurse instructor, sitting right here.
Actually, I would actually really like to be a nursing instructor one day. Ever since I was in third grade, I wanted to be a teacher, so.
Oh, this is perfect for you. You're doing such a great job. Welcome. You guys are both super smart. I'm always happy to work with both of you. Thank you so much.
No problem. I'm happy to work with you, too.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to kind of quickly go through the rhythms, okay? So normal sinus rhythm, sinus bradycardia and sinus tachycardia. They all have, sorry, what's going on? So from here to here, they're all going to look normal. Except in bradycardia, you're going to have less of these, right? And then in tachycardia, you're going to have more of these. So the rate is going to go up for tachy and then down for brady. So there's nothing abnormal going on in this area right here. This means that one is going to be slower than the other or faster than the other. That's it. So, let's see. Sinus tachy. I'm going to go into premature atrial contractions. Let me see if I can find an example here.
Yeah, this is where I'm going to have to study a lot because knowing it's one thing and identifying it is just a whole nother for me.
Okay, so it's the same thing as the rhythmia?
Let me see if I can make this.
You make sure atrial contractions is when the P wave is firing a little bit too soon.
Yeah.
Letty, okay.
That's correct.
Yay!
It's going to be like normal and then everything. And then all of a sudden, right here, out of nowhere, a pacemaker cell near, what is this?
Looks like part of the human body is taking over your screen. Oh, come on, WebMD, like you don't get enough attention.
For real. Okay, so out of nowhere, a pacemaker cell near the SA node decides it's going to fire before the SA node has to fire. And that's where we have our premature atrial contraction right here. So it's going to happen a little bit too soon. And then it's not going to be like the whole rhythm, like just that. So it's going to be here and there. So like, there's one here, there's one right here. And then after every premature atrial contraction, you're going to have a compensatory pause. So the heart is going to try to reset itself. So we're going to have this pause right here. So notice right here, this pause is a little bit longer than this one right here. So you're going to have the premature atrial contraction was going to happen too soon. It could be like morphed with a T wave. It could happen a little bit after the T wave, but it's going to be right there. It's going to happen too early. And that's why we, we can also use the calipers here. We're measuring the P to the P, right? So if I measured this normal P to this normal P, it's going to, this normal P right here is going to be longer than this.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense. That's where those calipers really come in handy then, is for tracking that kind of stuff down.
Yeah, so it kind of helps with like figuring out how normal or abnormal a rhythm is, basically.
Okay.
Because it can look like it might be normal. But then once you take your calipers and you start measuring things around, you're going to see like, hey, this one is out of place. So, let's see, if I have anything else to say about this one. So in the book, it does mention that the PR interval can be normal or prolonged. And the QRSs last under equal to 11, 0.11 seconds. It can be wide or it might be absent. All right, now sinus tachycardia. I mean, wait, I already did that.
Yeah, that one, yeah. Okay, hey, there's many of these things out here. You start diving in, you're like, oh, my gosh.
Okay, so now we're going to look at atrial fibrillation. What's a good one?
Okay, let me get over there.
I kind of like this one here.
Oh, Lord.
We are at our 40 minutes.
Are we? We're okay so far. I have not been kicked out and we're good to go.
Okay, well, I guess we should just be going until we get kicked out, I guess.
It gives me a warning. It'll give me a warning on this end. And I will absolutely let you know when it tells, plus it doesn't. And then just randomly kicks us out, but I don't think it's going to. Or if anybody else sees a warning, let me know. I think they're having mercy. They know we're trying to do something smart with this. Like, we'll give, we'll give a few extra minutes to think.
So for atrial fibrillation, I would definitely read a little bit more into this one because this is the most common rhythm. And there's actually more.
Look at that thing. Look at it. It looks like electrostatic activity. I'm sorry. My brain cannot comprehend this. Help me.
Okay, so with atrial fibrillation, so what I noticed from the book is that you're going to have your QRS. And then you can kind of tell that there's a T wave in there. So here's a T wave, here's a T wave, here's a T, here's a T. And everything in between just looks like a bunch of static, like you said.
Yeah, what is that? Are those called artifacts? It's been a long time, so I don't really remember what that is. Is that bad? Is that a bad sign? What is that? Like, when you see things going like all over the place like that, I have no idea what that means anymore.
I do not completely remember, to be honest. But I do remember that artifacts happen on EKGs. It can happen from like maybe muscle spasms or the leads are not placed on right. Or there's like other kinds of activity going on besides the heart rhythm.
Maybe, I think, okay, I'm not sure, but I think hyperkalemia Maybe, um, I think, okay, I'm not sure, but I think hyperkalemia or hypokalemia has something to do with it.
Oh, okay. I know it does with QRS waves and, no, I'd have to go back and look at the book because I don't remember. The QRSs are bigger, right, Letty? For hypo or hyperkalemia? The electrolyte imbalances create larger QRSs than normal. Isn't that what we read or?
Yeah, wider, wider QRS and then one of them is gonna be like a peaked, uh, either a T wave or a P wave or something like that.
And the joxin toxicity, I believe, creates a U wave, which you never wanna see like ever, right?
Yeah, you mean, I guess, people don't really know. I'm not sure if this is correct, but apparently people don't really know why U waves like happen.
Okay.
But sometimes they're there, sometimes we'll have them, sometimes don't. And they like, be careful with the U waves because you can actually mistake a U wave for a P wave.
Yes, yes, very true. And that's why I'm looking at this and that's where I struggled, to be completely honest. And I don't know about you guys, but I look at that and I'm like, wha, how am I supposed to tell if there is any other sort of wave activity? Because it's all like staticky. Do you know what I mean? Like, I don't know. Somebody help me figure it out. I am not an expert in this.
So I'm just, I'm just gonna like repeat what the book says on this.
Yeah, for sure.
What I like put together. So we have no P waves, right?
Okay, we just see a bunch of things going up and down, but they don't count.
No P or T wave?
P.
P, okay.
Yeah.
He, he is the one that comes first and I guess that the easiest way to remember that would probably be like P as in pre, like a prefix. That might be an easy mnemonic.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe. Well, good, at least I came up with something helpful.
Let's see, it says that multiple pacemaker cells are firing independently electrical impulses. So that means that different like cells, they're all deciding, hey, we're gonna fire on our own. We're not even gonna follow the rules.
Okay.
And that's why we get all of these little staticky kind of waves.
Because it's the chaos, basically.
It's chaotic.
Okay. But then, and, and when we see those ups and downs, we're just gonna assume that that's chaos. If there was a P wave there, it would be a lot more dramatic, is basically the point, right? And a lot more smooth.
Yeah, so a normal P wave is rounded and it's upright. And it happens before a QRS. So those are the three characteristics for a P wave. And, um, there are certain leads, which, uh, I don't know if the teacher will go into this, but in lead two, the P, the P wave is upright. But in other leads, the P may not be upright, it might be upside down. But just know that in lead two, which is what we see here, is going to be upright.
Well, that's important to know. No wonder they suggested use lead two. As everyone's on the same page.
Well, actually, for a lot of these, they tell you to use lead two to look at like how the rhythm looks. And then other times, they will tell you to use AVF or lead one.
Oh, for real?
Yes.
Like is that, because our book, it just says use lead two. Did you see that?
Yes, so the Hoffmann only says lead two, but in the EKG made easy, it'll actually tell you to look at a different lead.
So real life is gonna be a lot more different than this book. Thank you for that clarification, Letty.
I mean, I hope in real life, we are able to discern at least some of these rhythms when we get into the hospital.
We're gonna be.
Um, I guess I thought about a, a nice way to relate this, relate atrial fibrillation to something that we already know. And that is the rioters, so they do whatever they want and the cells here do whatever they want. They're all over the place.
Oh, I love that. Thank you so much, Sione.
That is a good way to remember that, yes.
The more.
We have rioters in our heart.
The more of these mnemonics we have, the better because you know, i- it sounds like a joke and fun now. And then we get there and watch us remember that when the time comes, you know, that'll be that random thing that sticks out. I remember that.
Yeah.
We're still good. No warnings yet, so keep on going.
Okay, so for this one, our atrial rate is going to be 300 to 600 beats per minute. The ventricular rate is going to be variable, so it's gonna depend on like how many there are. So if I had to kind of guess to me what the ventricular rate is here, I would count the Rs in the six, six second strip, right? So if I did that, there'd be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. So 10 times 10 is gonna be 100. So this is about 100 beats per minute in terms of ventricular rate.
Okay.
And then, so our P waves are not gonna be identifiable, the PR is not gonna be measurable, and our QRS is going to be less than or equal to 0.11 seconds. And then I also wanted to compare the atrial fibrillation to atrial flutter because in flutter, you're gonna see the difference, like what I mean by here in a bit.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for going over these with pictures because, I don't know, but it really helps. It helps. Thank you.
Like I try to help any way that I can.
It's amazing how much there is to know about this.
Okay. So in atrial flutter, you're gonna have what's called F waves. I can't make this larger than it is. Oh, there we go. So you're gonna have F waves right here. So here, here, and here, those are F waves.
Okay.
So for flutter, so think, uh, how do I say it? Well.
You said fluffy clouds earlier, right? There's something, yeah, F for fluffy clouds.
Like sometimes they'll be rounded, sometimes they'll be kind of pointy, but I like to think of it like fluffy clouds. So you have, you know, right here, these fluffy clouds, basically, which are gonna be your F waves.
Okay.
And then, see how like here, it's kinda like uniform?
Yeah.
But here, it's all over the place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be how you're gonna be able to tell the difference between fibrillation and flutter.
Oh, so flutter is a little bit more organized than fibrillation?
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting. See, like you would think just like by the word flutter would be all over the joint, but I guess not. Okay, thank you so much. That helps a lot.
I just wanted to point out because, you know, like, let's see, on a test.
You're like a P, is there even a T wave in there, Letty? Like, is there a T wave in flutter? Like, when we're looking at that, like, does one of those spiky teeth-looking things count as a T wave?
They don't necessarily count as T waves or like.
What is that?
Like, they're just gonna be called F waves.
Okay, so we call them F waves. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. So QRS complexes and F waves is pretty much all that's there.
Yeah, so these are gonna be F waves with QRS complexes.
Oh, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Well, starting to make a lot more sense.
And let's see, so the atrial rate for this one is going to be 240 to 300 and our ventricular rate is also going to vary. The, there's gonna be no P waves. You're gonna have this soft tooth flutter, which is gonna be your F waves. The PR is not gonna be measurable, so you know, there's no PR there to measure. And our QRS is going to be less than or equal to 0.11 seconds.
Okay.
All right, now we're gonna go into premature junctional contractions. I like the example that the book had.
Okay.
So basically, the book had, uh, three types of P waves. So there was one that was upside down like that. Then there's the absent P wave, and there was a P wave that happened after a QRS.
Yeah. Let me find the page that way. Uh, Sione, it's page 576.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and for anybody else who's listening, it's page 576. In the book, in the Hoffmann book, you'll find the different ones there. That I actually found kinda interesting, so feel free to.
So right here, I kinda found, uh, some pictures. Okay, so the P wave right here, so basically, what's happening right here is that, um, the AV node is firing off first instead of the SA node. And then, so if we have our AV node here and our SA node's up here, right? We have it starting here, that, um, electrical like pathway has to go up and then down. So it's going up instead of everything going down. So we started at our SA node, everything's supposed to be going down. So SA to AV to the bundle branches, right? That's gonna give us our upright P in lead two. So as you can see, everything's labeled lead two here. But because it goes from the AV node up and then down, you're gonna have that inverted P wave. Because it's not going the usual pathway that it does.
Okay.
It's going another way. It's going up, so it's not supposed to be going up. It's supposed to be coming down.
Okay, that makes.
That's a retrograde, um, P wave, in a sense.
Yeah.
And then, right here, we have no P wave. So basically, it didn't go up to the SA node. It just went straight down to the ventricles and then did its thing. Right here, it contracted the ventricles, right? And then it went up and then it did its thing.
Okay.
So, like, I, I don't really know how to thoroughly explain more than this. Just, you know, knowing that in junctional, premature junctional, junctional complexes, you're gonna have inverted P, a P after the QRS, or no P wave.
That's actually really helpful. Thank you. You, you did a great job.
And then, um, in the book, it's, or in the EKG's Made Easy book, it said that, um, the P waves are gonna be inverted in leads two, three, and AVF. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, uh, if I can, in a bit, I will also explain what I mean by those kinds of leads. And then the PR interval is going to be less than or equal to 0.12 seconds if there is a P wave before the QRS. So it's like right here, because it's before the QRS, you can measure a PR interval. But here, there's no PR interval, and here, there's no PR interval.
Okay.
And then you're gonna have your QRS, which is gonna be less than or equal to 0.11 seconds. So all of these, we have, we can measure QRS. Hey, and now, I didn't draw an example for myself of premature ventricular contraction, but there are different kinds. Oh, and here is a inverted P wave right here after the QRS. So that would be premature junctional contraction.
Okay.
And in the book, you have different kinds of premature ventricular contractions. So you have, uh, unifocal, multifocal. So unifocal is going to be where there is one ventricular pacemaker cell on its own and that's going off, right? That's maybe unifocal. And then multifocal is going to be like basically from multiple different pacemakers. And then you're gonna see, uh, two different kinds of rhythms on your EKG. So, and then, uh, you can have two PVCs in a row. That's a couplet. Three PVCs in a row is a triplet. And then, um, if every other beat is a PVC, that's trigeminal. If every third beat is a PVC, that's trigeminal.
Yeah, they had like one paragraph on that and I was like, oh gosh, like 80 important things in this one paragraph. Somebody save me.
Okay. Jack, do you know the page number for premature ventricular contractions?
Yeah, uh, it's page 578.
578.
The Hoffmann text, page 578. Yep.
Let me get the book real quick.
Yeah, and they're all right there and it's figure 29.22. It goes over all the ones that she just said. And like I said, it's literally like just this little tiny paragraph and it lists exactly what she said. It's just like, and it's compacted. And then the whole rest of the page, it draws them out. I'm like, oh my gosh, one of them's literally like doing like this huge, like, I've probably seen it as like doing like this huge dance, like. I'm, I, I don't even know. Like I said, reading these isn't on my forte. It's gonna take a while. Glad we started early.
I know.
Okay, so in your Hoffmann book, like Jack said, on page 578, there's all kinds of premature ventricular contractions. So if you have your book, I suggest you go and get it right now and up and up to that page as you're watching this.
Okay.
Okay. So, let's see. So in figure A, I really wish there was a way I could pull this up.
I know, right? It's okay, it's okay.
Actually, I might be able to do it a different way if I can do zoom on my phone and use my phone to show everybody the images. Let's see if I can join like that.
Yeah, just let me know and then I'll, I'll add you in. That's a brilliant thought. I didn't ever thought about that before.
Yeah. All right. I'm gonna stop share while I look at your, uh, info to join.
Let me know when you send it. I don't see anything on my end yet.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm putting in the meeting ID right now.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Sione, how are you doing? Do you have anything you'd like to add while we're like stuck in the intro?
About ECG?
About whatever you want.
Um, uh, okay, so.
Here we go. I see you. I've admitted you, Letty. Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, okay, so I was, uh, reading about infective endocarditis.
Ooh, cool.
Yeah, and then, um, I was learning about risk factors. So, um, risk factors include people, um, that are over 60 years old, immunodeficiency, IV drug use. So people that do heroin are at risk for infective endocarditis, diabetes mellitus. And, um, also, um, it affects the mitral and, or, um, it affects the mitral or aortic valves. And there's a question that asks, the nurse determines which patient is at greatest risk for developing IE.
Yeah.
And I'll share my screen, actually.
Yeah, go for it. Thank you so much. That gives, that gives us all a.
Yeah.
Regroup and get.
So, um, what do you think the answer is for connection check 30.2 for the risk factors?
Okay.
Who's risk for developing IE? A 20-year-old student undergoing a dental procedure, a 35-year-old man with a past medical history of IV drug use, a 65-year-old male, heart transplant patient on immunosuppressive therapy, undergoing a colonoscopy, a 70-year-old female with heart failure with an intravascular access device or home infusion.
And you said IV drug use was the big deal, right?
Yeah, um, I, so I think it's actually C. Um, I don't know how to check. I'll, I'm gonna try to find where to look.
Are you still there, Sione? I think we might have lost you for a second. Is everybody still there? Am I the only one still here? Oh, please don't be my internet. No, I look good. No, I look good, my other things. Uh-oh.
Oh, oh.
Oh my gosh, my internet decided to take a powder. Uh, let's hope that everything got saved, because I will punch the hacker or whoever it is in the throat, that's- I don't care if that's on recording, I'm so sick of this. Go ahead, please continue, I'm back.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, oh, Lucky, you can, you can continue.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to go, I'm sorry. Share my screen over here, I wonder how to do this. Okay, that's not what I'm trying to do. There we go. Oh wow, that worked. Okay.
And then you're going to have to share a screen from that screen. Because I can see her rotating over there, the little quarter.
I'm trying to get it all like, the same here.
Oh, that's so funny, that's so cool. But look, it definitely works too.
So, right here, we have a premature ventricular contraction, and right here as well, so there's two right there.
Okay.
And let's say that it was happening here, and it was happening here, and it was happening here. That would be a trigeminal.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
And then, right here, we have another one, and then we have this one. So that's going to be multifocal. Because this one is different from this one. So they're firing from different places.
Okay.
Let me see, yeah. So in the figures, it says that B is multifocal, A is unifocal. So see how these, right here, are both the same? Then those are unifocal. And then, right here, we have two in a row. Okay, so these are going to be couplets. And then, right here, we have three in a row. Those are going to be triplets.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. Sorry, it's taking me a while to grasp this.
And then, right here, let me see if I can get-
It looked like a crazy sine wave off of GarageBand, so please tell me what that is.
Okay, so, let me see, E was by Gemini. So that means that every other one is abnormal. So right here, right here, right here, and right here.
Why do we have two different, like, things going two different directions, if you don't mind me asking? Is that always a thing with by Gemini?
Uh, no, so this is from two different leads.
Oh, is that why we've got it swimming? Because I was like, by Gemini in two different lines, that would be easy to remember, but no, no, we have to make it up. Okay.
So this is right here, we have, yeah, this is two different leads.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
No problem.
Just said that, but okay.
And then, in this last one right here, we have our trigeminal. So we have one right here, and then this is our, so one, two, three.
Okay.
And then, one, two, three.
Oh, I see what you're saying, got it. Can you show me by Gemini one more time? I'm so sorry, where the points are.
Right here, this one.
Okay. So it's every other one?
Yeah.
Why does my book look different than that, in my face? No, it's not, probably, but there's some reason, ugh. It makes sense when you're pointing at it, and then my eyes scramble it. It's just like, ah, I have dyslexia.
See, in the book, it's upside down.
What side?
It's upside down, right here. It goes down, and then it goes up into the T wave.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, right here, in another lead.
It's dipping, yeah.
Yeah.
That one will take me a while to get done, that's okay, you keep going, I'll have to start these another time.
Okay. So I'm-
Just 20 times.
Stop sharing on my phone now.
That was a brilliant plan.
I couldn't think of anything else.
Well, just so you know, since the meeting ended itself and started again, we probably got another good 40 minutes to go. I just hope it saved everything we did in the beginning, I'm going to be so mad if it didn't. I'll be like, um, well, that, that was sad. I think you guys can record on your end as well. What's that?
I said hopefully it didn't get screwed up, because I joined this with my phone.
No, it's not your fault, if it's any, trust me, it might, no, that's a jerk. But I believe you guys have permission to record on your end, can you record on your end? I tried to enable that.
Uh, um, yes.
Okay, good, so, you guys, always feel free to do that as well. Just in case one of our internets goes down. Note to future sessions, uh, I need a backup.
Okay. And then, in the table, in the EKG's Made Easy book, for the characteristics for the premature ventricular contractions, it's going to say, regular unless interpolated PVC. Interpolated means that it's a PVC between two normal QRSs.
Okay.
So you're going to have a normal, an abnormal, and then another normal. That's interpolated. So the one in here, this one, is going to be the PVC between the two normal ones.
Okay.
So that's interpolated.
Okay.
And then, the rate is going to be within normal limits. And then, your P wave is going to be absent, retrograde, or after the QRS. There's going to be no PR interval, and the QRS is going to be greater than or equal to 0.12 seconds. And the T wave might be opposite of the QRS. Okay, I already did, did I already do ventricular tachycardia?
I don't think so, did she do that, Seonee? I don't think so.
Oh, um, no.
Okay.
No, yeah, we haven't gone there yet. I think we just started with, uh, that big pile of premature ventricular contractions and got lost in that mess. Well, me anyways.
Okay, so I'm going to try and hold this up to the screen, so you guys can look at this part of the book right here.
Sure. And that's what I've done too, don't feel bad, it's sometimes the only way to go.
So right here, we have the rhythms, the two rhythms right here. So see how the one on top looks a little bit more uniform than the one on the bottom? Okay, so the one on the top is monomorphic. The one on the bottom is polymorphic, because it's firing from two different, like, places. So see how there's some tall ones and some short ones right there on the second strip?
Yes.
Yeah. So, with ventricular tachycardia, you can't really tell that there's a P in there. You can't really tell if there's like, a T wave or anything. So what you're mainly going to see with that one is just like, mostly what looks like QRSs.
Okay, and then the difference is, one is pretty much the same height, and that's called monomorphic. And then when you have different heights, it's, you said, I have to look at the book myself, polymorphic.
Yes.
Just to recap, okay, thanks. Because I looked at that, and honestly, unless somebody explains it to me, I'm lost, so thank you. Because I was like, I don't know the differences between that all, it just looks like a bunch of blobs to me.
Well, so, monomorphic, it's firing from one pacemaker cell. Poly, meaning multiple, it's firing from multiple pacemaker cells. So that's why they're different heights and stuff.
Oh, that makes a lot of-
So you have somewhere like this, somewhere like this, and then it just goes up and down.
That makes so much sense, thank you.
And then, um, our ventricular rate is going to be 101 to 250 beats per minute. And then our P waves are going to be absent or have no relationship with QRS. Meaning that we might have like, a P wave here and there, but there's like, it's not like, in relationship to the QRS.
Okay.
There's no P wave before the QRS, before every QRS, and so on.
It's just doing what it wants, when it wants, and it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have no PR interval, and then our QRS is going to be greater than or equal to 0.12 seconds. And you also cannot differentiate between the QRS and the T wave.
Oh, so the QRS is greater than or equal to 0.12 seconds?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then, in the book, it also mentions that ventricular tachycardia is basically three or more premature ventricular contractions.
Okay.
So three or more PVCs, and they're going to be fast and wide. So you know how like, in the top one right there, those QRSs, they look pretty wide?
Yeah.
You know? Okay. Now, we're going to go on to ventricular fibrillation. So the difference between ventricular fibrillation and ventricular tachycardia is that fibrillation, it's going to be smaller wavies, in a sense, than the ventricular tachycardia. So tachycardia is going to be like, more like, you know, up and down like this on the EKG strip. And then, the ventricular fibrillation is going to be like, little tiny, like, if they look like little tiny sili or something like that.
Yeah, no, I see what you're talking about. I noticed that, and I was like, does that matter? So thank you for clarifying that. And for those listening, it's page 579. Page 579, shows both of them.
And then you can either have coarse or fine ventricular fibrillation.
Okay. And is coarse just kind of more uneven, and then fine, more even? Is that the difference?
So coarse, meaning that, like, the waves are a little bit more pronounced than fine. So if you had, like, uh, I really don't know what example to compare it to right now.
Well, that's okay, but that helped a lot, made sense, I got it, we're good, thank you. And then also, um, this particular type of fibrillation, ventricular fibrillation is a lot more deadly, from what I'm seeing, right? It's like, super deadly, like, it's an immediate, like, uh-oh, spaghetti-o deadly. Lethal, immediately treat, that's what I put in my notes, like, exclamation point.
This one, okay, so the next rhythm I was going to talk about is acystole, which means there is basically no electrical activity. In acystole, you have to know if what the rhythm that you are seeing is in fact true acystole, or if it's fine ventricular fibrillation.
Okay.
So you have, like, because if it's fine ventricular fibrillation, that means that shock is advised, okay? Acystole, no shock is advised. You have to do, like, compressions to get, you know, some sort of rhythm, so that, you know, when you do defibrillation, you have something to shock, right?
Yeah.
So those are going to be the two things. And then, um, with ventricular fibrillation, absolutely, first thing you got to do is CPR and defibrillation, and then you administer medications.
Okay.
Uh, during, oh yeah, the two types of medications can be vasopressor or anti-arrhythmic. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the two examples in the book that are given is epinephrine for the vasopressor, and amiodarone for the antarrhythmic.
That sounds familiar, uh, I'm looking at epinephrine right now, but I know I read about what you're saying.
Uh, yeah, it is amiodarone and epi.
Which page did you find that on?
That is going to be in the table.
At 581, but that might, yeah, there might be, tables are a better way to go sometimes with these books I'm finding.
Uh, I'm in the table and page 582.
Oh, thank you, okay, perfect.
So what I did for my notes was, I took like, a very, like, kind of summaries, what was in that small section under each rhythm.
Yeah.
And then I wrote down the causes and the treatment, so like, those are like, the basic stuff right there. Then I went to the table, and then, you know, you have your asymptomatic, and then your symptomatic rhythms. And I did both, and I included, you know, the symptoms, medical interventions, nursing interventions, patient teaching, and then, of course, the characteristics from the EKG's Made Easy book.
That's perfect.
So I did it like this, I don't know if you can read.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
Oh, there we go. That's awesome.
It looks like a bunch of blubber on my side.
Okay. Yeah, no, and it's kind of interesting, one thing I will mention about the Hoffman book, when it came to this, I don't know if you guys noticed, but like, Letty's mentioning, these tables have more information in them, and it's a little bit better organized than the actual texts. Although the text has details in there that you have to have as well, so it's kind of, kind of a catch-22 in that respect. But there's some details, like I said, I was reading in the text, I'm like, it doesn't say it, but you go over to the table and it's there, so you kind of have to just read everything and know everything. I hate saying that, but I'm like, know everything, oh. Sorry, guys.
That's what professors would say.
I know, and I'm like, what, why does it have to be after?
Like, that really helps me.
Such a great teaching skill.
If you know everything, but if you do that, you're actually going to fail, like, you can't know everything.
Yeah, there, there's really a lot of information, and you just have to, like, in a sense, pick and choose what you feel is more important.
The most important facts and consolidate it, you have to consolidate it. That's why I suggest, and which Letty just illustrated, consolidating it to a one-pager. If you can explain what you're doing in one page, then you know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so the only rhythm that I actually did with more than one page was, I believe, atrial fibrillation.
Yes.
The one that's most common, so I did two pages on that.
Yeah.
It's like, one page basically, front and back, but for every rhythm, like, I did one page. I tried to keep it to, like, you know, one side.
It helps, huh, it helps to do that, like, and like I said, that advice that I got, I keep forgetting his name, I know I referenced it once, but it came from a astronaut. So I was like, ooh, this is brilliant, I'm going to apply this skill, and it started working. So that's, that's where I got that from, was boiling everything down to a one-pager. And he moved into space, he's an astrophysicist, he's a genius. He offers master classes, which I cannot afford, but it was in the commercial, and I went, I learned something.
Oh, interesting, yeah. So, I'm going to get back to the rhythms. So in acystole, I also want to mention that you can have P wave acystole, where your rhythm, you have only P waves, and they're going to be equal distance apart.
Okay.
So that's the only thing about acystole, basically. And then we're going to go into first-degree AV block. So in the first-degree AV block, it's basically going to look like what a normal sinus rhythm looks, except that every PR interval is going to be prolonged.
Okay.
That is the only difference. So-
Interesting.
The main thing to remember for this one is that every PR interval is prolonged.
And that was for which one again?
The first-degree AV block.
Thank you, sorry, I haven't had a chance to get to these yet, so that helps.
So your, your rhythm is going to be regular, the rate is going to be within normal limits, so 60 to 100 beats per minute. Your P waves are going to look normal, there's going to be one before every QRS. Your PR is going to be greater than 0.20 seconds, and your QRS is going to be less than or equal to 0.11 seconds.
Okay, so it's just elongated, is it, um, I'm like, looking at the book, and I'm like, what on earth is this? So this one's not that big of a deal, right? Unless someone's actually having a problem, and then you just treat it, treat it if there's a problem, am I right?
Uh, there is no specific treatment, so you would just treat the cause. So, some of the causes for heart blocks are, number one, acute coronary syndrome. Under that umbrella, you have unstable angina, acute, um, non-stomy, I forgot what that stands for.
I forget too, I hear my mother say it all the time, she's a nurse, I'm like, what?
It's, uh, it has to do with, um, like, we look at stemies for people that have had like, a myocardial infarction.
Yes.
So basically, you can tell by a person's rhythm if that person in the past had a heart attack.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, yeah, 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 yeah. That's actually really interesting too, and depending on the timeframe.
Like evidence, like, in their EKG rhythm, it's really cool. I learned that from an EMT.
You know what, my mom took the EMT class too, so you guys are like, wavelengthing right now, right? Like, that's where, she told me that too, I was like, oh, it's so interesting.
I missed my class.
You know, all those classes come into play, you know, you can never learn too much, I mean, it's amazing.
Okay. And then, the other causes for heart blocks were electrolyte imbalance. Okay. And then, uh, the other causes for heart blocks were electrolyte imbalance and medication toxicity. So it, uh, I don't know which one's specific, but there were some that like kept coming up, like the Joxin kept coming up for medication toxicity.
Yeah, I saw that.
So I don't know if this would be like one of the medications that could cause, um, first degree AV block.
Okay.
Yeah, basically.
Could be more helpful.
Basically, for this one, like, there isn't really a lot to do. You just do vital signs. You assess first signs and symptoms. You do a twelve feet of KG and then you assess for other kinds of causes.
You know what? Uh, for those listening who wanna follow along about just a simple chart for AV block, page five eighty-seven in Hoffman goes over a summary of heart blocks, which I know nothing about, but there it is. So we'll give the floor back to Letty on what on earth a heart block is and explain.
I don't really know how to explain what a heart block is, but it's there.
It was like a blocked choker or something, right?
Um, I forget, but I'll have to read up on it and let you guys.
Like, it's a problem. That's all we know. That's, that's why we're student nurses.
Yes, we are learning all the time. If anybody out there knows the answer to this question, please put it in the.
Put it in the comment below.
All right, so the last one that, um, I'm gonna go over is the bundle branch block, which is not in the Hoffman book.
Okay, thank you. So I'll stop looking then.
This one is in the EKGs made easy. Let me see if I can find the specific page number in the physical book. I don't know if the pages are different in the PDF, but it's going to be. Let me see. It's gonna be in chapter nine. Okay.
Okay.
And it's gonna talk about, um, in this one, it's gonna be page two fifty-five. I don't know if it's gonna be different in PDF.
Okay.
But basically, um, what I wrote down, like something quick, and then, um, I don't know if I can pull up my notes real quick as well, but basically, you have right bundle branch block and a left bundle branch block. So think of it like the turn signal theory, okay? You turn your turn signal up to go right. You turn it down to go left.
Okay.
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 So, right here, this one, these are facing down, so they're gonna be from the left bundle branch block. And then these are all facing up right here. Those are gonna be right bundle branch blocks.
Awesome. I love a good mnemonic. You know, that's how I roll, so.
And then for this one, the QRS is going to be greater than or equal to zero point twelve seconds. And, um, it's considered an incomplete right or left bundle branch block if the QRS is zero point eleven seconds to zero point, uh, one, one, nine seconds.
Okay.
I know, that sounds a little confusing.
Yay, for more math to learn.
So it's like zero point eleven, but not yet twelve.
No rounding allowed, clearly.
Let me see if I can get my EKG notes real quick to show you my notes on the bundle branch block.
For sure.
Um, but I also wanted to mention real quick that a good way to study for MedSearch, that I've seen a lot of videos, you get the Saunders and Kleck's, and then you compare your book notes, your class notes, your PowerPoints and, um, to what's, like, you compare like everything basically together and then you highlight um, what you find is most common among the three. So your textbook, your PowerPoint notes, and the Saunders and Kleck's.
Saunders and Kleck's, okay.
Yeah, that was a tip from Sarah RN from Registered Nurse RN.
Okay.
For how to study for MedSearch.
That's really helpful, cuz yeah, it's kinda tough to wrap your mind around all of this, as we all know. So Saunders and Kleck's, and that's like a specific book we can buy, I'm assuming?
Yes. I actually, let me, let me get my book so I can show you.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I actually have it right here.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, you smarty pants. You already know. Saunders Comprehensive Review and Kleck's RN Examination. Can you read me the ISBN? Would you mind? Thank you so much. Thank you.
And actually, so there's a code that comes in it, and if you type that code on the website that it gives you, it gives you even more practice questions.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Yeah. Um, okay, so it's, um, okay, ISBN is nine, seven, eight.
Nine, seven, zero.
Three, two, three.
Three, two.
Three. Yeah. Uh, so after three, two, three, it's three, five.
Three, five.
Eight, four.
Eight, four.
One, five.
One, five. Okay, so I have nine, seven, eight, zero, three, two, three, three, five, eight, four, one, five. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. And it's a really good book because it's, um, it's the latest edition. It's the eighth edition.
Okay.
And, yeah, it was actually, uh, written in twenty twenty, so it's up to date. And it really, it gives really good information and, um, Professor Snyder said that this book will really help you.
Oh, really? Okay, that's good. So Snyder recommended. We can put like a.
Yeah.
We should seriously contact them and be like, what are your recommended study tool books? You know what I mean? Actually, Snyder approved. If she ever goes and watches these, I swear.
Yeah, so I found my notes on the bundle branch block. There isn't much more on it.
Okay.
Uh, than what I already said, but I'm gonna share my screen anyways. You can see.
And thank you so much, Sione. I really, really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay. So here we have our bundle branch block. You know, like I said, it's zero point twelve seconds or more. And then, um, let's see, a QRS that is zero point ten to zero point twelve in this book is considered incomplete. And then right here, we have positive and negative. So like positive, meaning up, negative, meaning down. So remember, we turn our left, our turn signal down to go left and we turn it up to go right. And then, uh, don't worry about these exceptions, like totally ignore that. That goes into more depth stuff, but these are my notes on the bundle branch block.
That'll probably end up being something we get taught in lecture. Just watch. Things that are not in the book are gonna end up there. We're like, where did you get that from? Outer space, some other planet, I don't know. Thank you so much. I wish I could make notes that look that organized. It's, it's never gonna happen. It's never gonna happen, guys.
So the other books I also wanted to mention were these.
Oh, yeah, is this like the, is this like the fundamentals, ha- hack the fundamentals book except for MedSearch?
Yeah.
This one is like, uh, remember the test for success book that we were gonna get? And it was gonna give us like test-taking strategies?
Okay.
They have success books for a lot of things. One of them is MedSearch. I have not looked for this yet and I just ordered it.
Did you buy it or did you rent it?
Huh?
Did you buy it or did you rent it?
I, I bought it because I, I actually, I love books.
Me too.
Yeah, me too.
So I like to keep all of my books and, uh, my room is overflowing with books. I have nowhere to put them. Like, I'm that person that goes to the store, is like buys like ten new books, but already has like twenty like unread books at home.
Same here. Oh, my gosh. I don't know like how to explain. You get a high off of just buying books?
Yes. That I like to reread again because they're just so good.
I know.
I'm a textbook geek. I mean, it's bad. I have like, my whole house is filled with books and most of them, I, I think are textbooks. Nonfiction books, I'm, I'm addicted to them. It's terrible. Just see like my computer, my computer programming stash of books that I have yet to read through completely. For the app I one day build.
And then the other two things I also wanted to mention were the patho flashcards and the farm flashcards.
Okay, patho. Do you know who made those?
Uh, no, but I can check for you real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kaplan.
Wait, uh, what about Kaplan?
Oh, I was just thinking, maybe it's Kaplan that makes the flashcard.
Uh, I'm not entirely sure. I don't think so though. Let me check real quick.
For sure. Thank you. And you said that you, you heard from other students that they were really helpful, right?
I actually bought, uh, myself.
Oh, did you? Did you get a chance to check them out? And they're pretty good?
I like them. Let me, let me grab, I have some on my desk. Let me grab them and show you what they look like.
That sounds good.
Yep.
Anything that can help me break this down. It's just like a big massive chunk of information, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I have this one. A friend gave it to me. It's the ATI MedSearch book.
Oh, that sounds good. ATI Med.
Yeah, it's really thick.
Big that is. From ATI, I'm sure they made something that big.
Yeah.
Um, and I hate to bother you about this again, too, have the.
Yeah, it, uh, it gives, um, it has questions and it has information in it, so more condensed information. So this one, okay, the ISBN, um.
So this is what it looks like.
Oh, that's.
It's from Valerie Ileek.
Leek? I didn't, last part, L-E-E-K?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. And that's for patho?
Yes, and also for farm. It's the same person.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I couldn't find ISBN for the.
Take out a flashcard for gastro. So they are in order by systems. You have gastro, you have endo, uro, urologic, you have immune, muscular, skeletal, nervous, cardiovascular, respiratory, sensory, you have dermatologic, mental health, women's health.
Wow. So they are pretty organized then.
Yes. And then here you have the. And then, so it's kinda like a little something basic about it. And then in the back, you have a little section for pathophysiology right here. And then it tells you like important stuff, like to look out for right here.
Oh, my gosh.
And then it tells you like things to keep in mind. It has the assessment and diagnostic findings, complications, and then medical and surgical treatments. And I like these because, you know, um, cuz, you know, I commute for, like, sometimes to school, so what I can do, you know, pull these out and, you know, like.
Okay.
Know, quiz.
Wait, while you're driving?
Well, I do a lot of things while I'm driving, which I'm not going to say on here.
Targets on YouTube.
Nobody report me.
My criminal justice behind shall stay silent.
Um, so actually, something interesting that I've learned is if you get a DOI as a nurse, you lose your license.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Drinking is just not anybody's time anymore.
I don't freaking drive, okay?
Yeah, you know, like, I, I'm gonna be straight up, like, if I drink anything at all, I'm literally making sure I'm not driving anywhere for like two days. And I was like, Jack, seriously? I'm like, no, I'm for real, because what if my liver doesn't clear that out? Like, I know that might.
Yeah.
Arinoid.
I know.
What if it doesn't? You know, so I'm like, if it's gonna be a long, long weekend, which is rare these days, and I have nothing to do, okay, maybe then. Maybe then, maybe, but probably.
Oh, you know what's nice? Going to Sequoia.
Oh, yes. Oh, my God. Everybody, all my friends are like summer, like everybody, I mean, everybody is going to Sequoia right now. And I'm just like, I wanna go.
What's Sequoia?
Yeah.
Out of this loop, what is happening?
It's a, it's a huge forest. It's a national park. It's really pretty.
It has really tall trees. I love trees.
Yeah, me too.
We should go. Road trip.
I know.
Yeah.
So this is a heparin, uh, card from the farm flash, right? And then you have, um, like, this would be, uh, what do you call it? The generic name, and then you have your trade names, I think.
That's awesome.
And then in the back, it has the classifications, the action, adverse, and side effects, things to keep in mind, like for patient teaching, and then what to assess, so.
Oh, that's really awesome. Thank you so much for sharing that. I, that's super duper helpful. That really consolidates it a lot. Were they super expensive or were they like reasonable? Everything's expensive now.
I think they were reasonable for the price. They're like around thirty-something bucks each.
Okay.
On Amazon, I feel like it's a lot more cheaper than Barnes Noble.
Yeah.
Yeah, I buy all my stuff on Amazon and then what I look out for is the new and used products. So when I see that used, that means that like a customer got them, they got opened, or they got damaged or whatever, then they got returned. But everything is still there. And that's always gonna be a couple bucks cheaper.
Yeah, thank you so much. Cuz those look definitely worth everybody's time, so I would.
I, I really like them. They're good to reference back to, like, for, um,
Yeah.
The diabetes ones, I actually drew little pictures for what the patho, um, the card said for the patho wanting. And it kinda really helped me like kind of solidify what diabetes type one was. And then, uh, so maybe next week I can show you what little drew doodles I did.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. That's totally great. Um, and, oh, Sione, thank you so much for sending that down. It's, so do you get that book from the ATI testing? Is that where you got it from?
Um, uh, actually, someone gave it to me, but yeah, that's where he got it from.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
And Letty, what we're talking about is, um, cuz I think you had actually popped off over to go get the flashcards. So let me, there's an ATI MedSearch book. Look at that thing, which it's like, who would've thought?
And what, is that like a test bank kinda thingy or what is that?
Um, it's, uh, it's like the Saunders book, so it has questions and then, um, condensed information.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's for everything MedSearch?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's only.
Does that'll last?
Adult, adult, medical, surgical, nursing.
Okay, and how, like, uh, you said someone gave that to you?
Yeah.
So you don't know how much they pay?
Um, fifty-three dollars.
Yeah, we're all like, ew, we're envious. We want that book.
Yeah, I know.
All right, well.
Maybe they have it for, oh, I've seen it on Amazon for cheaper, I think.
Oh, it is on Amazon? You have seen.
Yeah, I've seen Amazon, yeah, ATI products on Amazon. I forgot the prices, but I would assume they're a lot cheaper than the website.
What was, um, okay, so, so that we get the right thing again. We have ATI MedSearch. Is that all that it says? Or what does it say as the title?
RN, adult, medical, surgical, nursing.
Adult, medical, surgical, nursing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's an eleven point O.
Um, it's addition nine point O.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm writing that down.
Yeah, I think it came, it looks like they came out with two newer versions as well. They have ten and they have eleven.
How much are they going for?
Let's.
I'm gonna be broke, you guys, for the rest of my life.
I can't even tell you right now how much money I spent on all the freaking nursing stuff.
Those checks. Oh, my gosh.
See, the nine is paperback, ten bucks.
Get out of town right now.
It's used and it's ten bucks.
Letty's like, buy track, I'm buying it right now. See you later.
There's.
I'm slow. I'll just ask you what's important out of there.
They have, they have new from, uh, let's see, twenty-four, fourteen, and that's included shipping. Shipping is four bucks and then taxes like three or two seventy.
Okay.
Which is not too bad.
No, that's not bad at all for a book that big. That's a humongous book of information that's gonna last for a really long time. And ATI is a very reliable source. Um, like, I recommended on, when you guys go to the, the YouTube, um, I told Letty, I was like, I didn't spam everybody with this, but I uploaded a few different things, like stuff for nursing one-on-one students, like a breakdown of how to understand the Davis drug guide, cuz that thing was scrambling my brain. And then, um, just different things. And then, um, just different things as I go through, uh, the chapters, in case it's easier for people, you know, to understand it that way. But, um, I forgot what I was gonna say. No. What was I gonna say? I don't know. Anybody know what I was gonna say?
We all lost our train of thought.
Like my brain saw, swat cooler turned off and the sound distracted me and ADHD went out. So we're done. Can say it's gone now. There was a point to that. I promise. It tied into something. What? I don't know. Oh, well.
Yeah, there's actually a maternal book too, maternal and newborn nursing, um, ATI. But yeah, I'm on the website and the eleven point O edition is fifty three dollars, but maybe, maybe it's on Amazon.
That's what I was going to say.
Edition ten. Let's see, they have new from thirty bucks. And then addition eleven, they have this one, oh, they have used from forty five bucks.
Yeah, it's more expensive because it's the newer edition.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say. I remembered now. It was about ATI testing. Um, you know, they made teas. So like I said, I recommend it to anybody who hasn't taken it yet. I, I actually bought the teas package. And I know it was kind of a hefty price, but it really, 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 really paid off in my score. So, you know, ATI, very beneficial, like consolidating things.
Can you remind me asking what you got on your teas?
No, not at all. I got a ninety one point three percent.
Wow.
Yeah, that's really good.
Yeah, and, uh, and thank you. That, I, I contribute that, my, I contribute that to a different thing. ATI's, uh, test packet, you know, that two hundred and fifty dollar humongous thing, that was very, very helpful. Um, and then also crash course, that was amazing. So for like anatomy, phys and chemistry. And then also just some old textbooks on, you know, chemistry or, you know, physiology and anatomy, whenever you need to look something up in, in hard format, but those were the, the things that pulled me through that test and brought me that score. So, um, my, my recommendation to always is, and I tell this to everyone, if you're gonna take a test, and I got this from my mother, go to whoever made the test. So ATI made teas, so go to ATI to study for teas. Do you see what I mean?
Kaplan is, oh, yeah, I heard Kaplan makes, and.
Really? I heard it was Pearson View, but are they switching to Kaplan? Cause I wouldn't be surprised. Cause Kaplan makes real estate.
Oh.
Kaplan make my real estate? Or did I just say that and I'm not supposed to? Because that's probably, I have a real estate.
For our school, we're doing Kaplan. So Ms. Parkinson, actually, um, I asked her, you know, for extra testing material, which she meant, she, uh, recommended lip and cut. And, yeah, lip and cut, and then, um, Q and A. And then, um, she said to get in hang of knowing how to do Kaplan tests, because we're, you need to buy the packet every single semester. And every single semester, we're gonna be taking those Kaplan tests.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all right, you know, and then like you guys thought our points actually depend on that.
Oh, my gosh, that was awful. And then we had to take ours a semester, I mean, not a semester, but a month early. And I was like, um, extra, extra.
Yeah, actually, you, um, yeah, don't forget to do questions from Kaplan, cause we still have that when we bought that.
I use it for like maybe all of three days.
Is it still?
I believe so, and maybe.
I don't know.
I haven't.
Cause I know we're gonna have to buy it again, right? Like each semester you have to buy it. We have like another. So I guess for next semester, we'll get two tests, right? One for Med Search, one and one for?
Yeah, maternity. Yeah, I'm assuming.
Baby stuff.
Like, if you, if you went in and then looked at the different kinds of tests that they had for, um, Kaplan, there's like different categories and there you can like test yourself on. And they had two for fundamentals.
That's right. You're right. I remember that now.
Do you know what kinds of, what chapters we should study for maternal slash newborn? I did email the teacher. I mail, I mail to the, to of the professors and haven't gotten back to me yet.
Yeah, I emailed Ms. Jacobs and she hasn't gotten back to me. And I'm kind of afraid that part of it might have been because like, maybe I sounded like too, uh, what was the word I used, Jack? Demanding?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, because I was like, you know, if you could just give us this, that would be great. Thanks. Like, I didn't mean to sound like that.
Oh, no, it's okay. I, I think she appreciates the fact that you care so much to prepare. Look at it that way.
She does. She does. And she's actually finishing her doctorate degree right now. So I think that's what's going on. So I, I think that's why.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, no, she's working hard on getting her doctorate done while she runs CNSA, while she does all the other classes. So I think we haven't the background for her yet, because otherwise I'm sure she would have emailed you guys back. Like she, oh, you know.
What is she getting her doctorate in?
Uh, I think nursing education. If I'm, I'm, but don't quote me, cause if I'm wrong, I could be wrong. But I believe it's nursing.
Oh, oh, cool.
I could be wrong. There's something like that.
Okay.
But she.
They're gonna change NP programs to doctorate. I don't know what year though.
What's that?
They're gonna change MNP programs to doctorate.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I, I got really excited about that, cause I'm trying to go for NP. And then, you know, it's not just masters anymore. Now they, now we can do doctorate.
Oh, so you think I can go ahead and get my masters in like, you know, informatics and then go and get my doctorate in, and, in nurse practitioner?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Cause I thought I was hoping for, that was the route I was planning on. I was like, they'll invent that by the time I get there, hopefully.
I mean, yeah, like, you know, whatever you wanna do, like, there, there's a lot of stuff out there. Like, for me, I'm actually gonna try and use my psychology degree when I do NP.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Like, yeah, trick, NP.
Like, um, I don't really know how I explain it, but I do want to like emphasize mental health with my patients, because, you know, mental health is, is super important. And, like, they, they are starting to address it more in healthcare. You know, they give surveys and they ask you, you know, like, how are you feeling? Have you had any suicidal thoughts? You know, stuff like that. Basic surveys for mental health. You know, I, I know that I've had them. When I go to my doctor's visit, like, or a new doctor for the first time, they always give me a survey. Or I can survey when I go to different kinds of doctors, like maybe specialists or, you know, stuff like that. And I think that's great, because, you know, nobody really paid too much attention to mental health before. You know, like doctors would just kind of do your thing with your physical health, not so much mental. So I like how they're starting to like really incorporate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
What about Sione? What are you looking at?
Oh, um, well, um, I would, I'm, I, um, I'm considering CRNA.
Oh.
I actually, yeah, before I did my prerequisites, I was actually thinking I wanted to do that.
Very.
For nursing school before, yeah.
Very awesome. Very awesome. That's great. That's fantastic. It'll be fun to see what we all, what we decide.
I know. We'll have a nursing, uh, school reunion.
Oh, my God, that's gonna be so awesome.
Yeah, we can go do it in Sequoia.
We're all gonna be talking about, like, hey, remember when we had to do nursing school during COVID?
We all need shirts for that by the time, seriously. It's, we don't even know what's gonna happen next semester. It's insane.
Actually, um, I don't know if you guys heard, but the president is actually pushing for us to, I guess, go on campus.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Did you hear that? We now have to all wear masks everywhere and it's statewide. So.
Yeah, according to Newsome. Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm like, yeah, I get to suffocate some more. But at the same time, I will say that every time I took it off, I ended up catching some god awful virus. But I'm like.
So nursing students are gonna be the only students on campus on, in the fall, probably?
Be lonely.
I really, I really don't know. But, you know, if they do it, kind of like blended classes, where they're only allowing, I guess, some people to be on campus, or maybe.
Air, airframe mechanics and things like that, and automotive mechanics. And, I mean, please, like, you can do that online. You have to have hands on, just like with what we went through. I mean, it was, we were really lucky that we got at least through the practicum, because, I mean, without that experience, I don't think I'd know anything. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, we needed that, excuse me, but hands on. So that worked out to our benefit, thank goodness. But I don't know how we're gonna get our hours. We have to get somehow that covered. So that's gonna be the tough part, the clinical hours, getting the hospitals to be flexible.
If you're going to Med Search during the first half, pack a three-course meal.
Drive for twenty-four hours. Bye, Jack.
I, I'm actually, I'm actually looking into getting a bento box for like Med Search. So I can have, like, I'll have my breakfast on the way, then I'll have like a little snack section, and then I'm gonna have my little lunch section, and then I'm gonna have my dinner section.
I know, literally, by the time you leave the house and get back, it's like, you know, then you gotta go back the next day. Hope we're gonna be tired.
Yeah.
Next semester, you know what happened? Sione, you were sharing something. Um, oh, Letty, did you get to say everything you wanted to say about the, um, hard stuff? Sorry, my brain started getting the migraine. So now we're starting to get.
I'm coming back. Hold on.
Stuff and things.
Uh, some of the things that I didn't go over that I think people should know is the chart or the table in chapter twenty-nine that talks about the medications.
Yeah. Oh, God, I can't believe you forgot that. I know. You're right. That's super important. What, you want me to find the page on that?
Yes, please.
I, I know exactly what you're talking about. And I, I thought to myself, I'm gonna go back and, and look at all these drugs and go write them out. And then I didn't do anything. So that, that didn't work out. Forgot about them. So the drugs can be found, it's table twenty-nine, one. This is great. Sione, we're talking about, uh, making sure we know the drugs, the medication class, the names, the action, the indicated rhythm. Uh, and it's great, because the charts are there and it tells you what it's used for. It's for AF or AFL. It's used for ST or AM. Specific drugs for specific types of rhythms. That's found on page five sixty-six and page five sixty-seven in the Hoffman book. Five six.
Okay.
In Hoffman book, for those who are listening.
Another table also in the chapter that talks about the difference between cardioversion and defibrillation.
Oh, yes.
Know the difference between the two.
That is, I remember that. Thank you so much. That is page, yep, tw- uh, five seven two, and it's table twenty-nine point three. So, page five seven two. It goes over cardioversion and defibrillation, the differences. Good points. Um, do you wanna just give us a quick synopsis, Letty, about what that, the differences are in like one sentence? Do you remember? If you don't, it's okay.
I'm good.
Okay.
Letty's tired.
Are we coming hard? Do you wanna let Sione go over whatever she was, um, you were talking about, um, myocarditis and all that? Good jazz?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Or bad jazz, technically.
I'm gonna look to see if there's anything interesting that I, um, wanna share. So, okay, so for infective endocarditis, it says, okay, so clinical manifestation. So for clinical manifestation, clinical manifestations of IE include, something, it's something called Osler's nodes, O-S-L-E-R, L-E-R apostrophe S. So this is when there are red painful nodes on the pads of the fingers and toes. And there's also something called Janeway lesions. These are red painless spots on the palms and soles.
And are these for, you said, myocarditis?
Uh, yeah, infective endocarditis.
Oh, wow. So that's, those are symptoms, like signs of symptoms that show up? Just to make it stand. Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah. And also for infective endocarditis, you'll see the patient have splinter hemorrhages, which are tiny blood clots that run vertically under the nails.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting. Thank you so much for sharing that. Chapter, was that again?
It, um, okay, so this one.
Sorry.
It, oh, it's okay. Um, it's the cardiovascular chapter. Let me see which one exactly.
Oh, is it in like the vascular?
Chapter thirty, right?
Is it chapter?
Let me verify.
Cardiac disorders. There's the vascular one, I think, is in, is it thirty-one?
Yeah, it's chapter thirty.
Okay, thank you so much. That's fascinating.
Yeah. I don't think it's, it's important to know the epidemiology, cause I watched a lot of Med Search videos and they all say, they don't say med epidemiology. They don't study that. They say, study the signs and symptoms, the patient education, uh, clinical manifestations, diagnostic test, the treatment. The both, um.
One warning. Uh, one of the graduates told me epidemiology was important, so. I just wanna give you a warning really quick. Um, I meant to send, I cannot believe I did not send that out. Never get sick. You get stupid when you're sick. You don't remember to do anything. Yeah, I wanna copy and paste what he wrote me, and then I'm gonna send it to you guys. I might just like, I don't like the jokes, but like.
Was it Mikey that told you this?
What's that?
Does anybody know, off the top of their head, or can explain to me what epidemiology is basically?
I can Google it. Epidemiology, yeah, help us out. Sione, go ahead.
Um, it is, okay, so it's the origin of a disease, but okay, I'm gonna double check too.
I know, but I'm getting lost between, it's like epidemiology, pathophysiology, and I'm like, nah.
Physiology is like the physiology of that pathology.
I'll just start rhyming together with the ologies and then I get lost. You know, I don't know what to tell you.
Like, I know with patho, we have to look at enzymes and chemicals and hormones and all that kind of stuff.
Okay. You got it, Sione. I'll let you take.
Yeah, it's the branch of medicine, which deals with the incidence, distribution, and possible control of diseases and other factors relating to health. So incidence, distribution, and control of the disease.
Okay.
Oh, so that's basically, basically when they're breaking it down, like what's causing it, how do you fix it? That is the epidemiology. It's just put in more layman's terms. So.
How it spreads.
So, so there we go. So, so at least now we know that we're solving it, even though we didn't realize we were with that big fancy group. Okay. Well, you know, we're on the right path. We're getting there.
All right. Yeah, I'm gonna go now.
All right, Sione, you got it. Yeah, I know you. And best of luck with classes.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. And Letty, do you, are you ready to go now too? Did you get everything out that you wanted to share?
I think that's it.
You think that's it? All right. So are we ready to wrap this puppy up?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Thank you so much, you guys, for contributing. You did a fantastic job. Seriously. Lots, lots of work, lots of help. It was awesome. This'll probably end up being two different uploads, cause it got split in the middle. So, um, yeah. So for those of you who are wondering where to look, you know, wait, that probably should have been said in the first video. Look, look down at the other uploads to find the rest. So. Everybody have a wonderful night and thank you so much for stopping by. I know Jen wanted to stop by, so she, she texted when we were here.
And then I just wanted to say, you know, remind people, if you want the resources that I'm sending, everybody, let me know. Email me to my email. So look, using my name, okay, but it's the number two. There's three different emails under my name. Mine that I use has the number two in it. Do not email the one with a one or without a number.
Oh, my God.
Because I will not get it.
Oh, my gosh. Well, you know that's, that we both have signed up. Sione and I have both signed up. So just throw us in the loop. And then for anybody else out there who's listening, uh, email Letty.
Yes, and I would, uh, whenever you, uh, upload videos, I would like notification.
Yes, I will do that. I will do that. Um, I will send that out to everybody then, because, uh, you know, like I said, I wasn't sure how much everyone wanted to get spammed. But you know what? At the end of the day, who cares? If they don't wanna get spammed, they can mute me.
Actually, on YouTube, I can like press the little subscribe thing to get your notifications, right?
There you go. You probably.
Subscribe to the channel.
There you go. All right, you got it.
All right. Have a good night.
Bye, everybody.